Well, good morning, everyone. Thank you for those that are here attending today, those that may be watching online, and welcome to anybody that may be watching the recording of this after the fact. I would ask anybody speaking today, please lean into the mics. There's a lot of ambient noise with the air conditioning and the fan clicking, and we'll try to get through this before everybody roasts in the room. But before we begin, I'd like to invite Mr. Bob Hummel up to provide a quick invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come before you in this meeting of our Council of Leadership for this county, and we request the blessing of your wisdom on our leaders and of our citizens here, that we can make good decisions that reflect well on your holy name. We ask that you be with us and with our community, and keep it strong in your name. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amanda, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Thayer.
Here.
Commissioner Pettit.
Here.
All righty, so it's 9:02, we're starting our meeting. First item we have is approval of the agenda that was presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. First item of business we have are several items on consent. I'd accept a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Elected officials, department head, staff reports. Susan Cherry, anybody? Okay. Tony, our finance manager, has a quick update on status of audit. We've had some delays due to sickness, I understand, so.
Tony McCormick, Finance. As you know, there's been some delays and complications with getting our financial audit issued this year. Much of that is a result of some personnel issues with our external accounting firm outside of the county's control. A continuance or a, I forget what it's called, an extension has been filed with the state, so we're good till 30 September. I've spoken with the partners at the audit firm, and we're committed, they're committed, to getting everything done and submitted before that deadline. One thing this has done is it's brought to fruition the definite need to take these duties on in-house within the county. We've discussed that, I've discussed it with the auditors, I've submitted a proposed structure for the finance department to be able to build that excess capacity internally, to be able to take on those duties. And I'm working with the external accounting firm and with the auditors to be able to acquire all the necessary documentation, the key reconciliations, any kind of work papers, to be able to start with a solid base internally as opposed to starting from scratch, to be able to get the documents needed for completion of this year's audit as well as going forward into future years. Yeah, that's the update. I don't know if there's any specific questions. I'm in contact both with the auditors and with the external accounting firm to be able to get this, to keep this moving to meet the deadline.
Just without detail, I mean, how is Mr. Ray doing?
I don't know that this is a, I mean, he's doing okay.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, just for the public, we have a external CPA that has helped prepare our papers for audit each year, has worked for the county for years, very expert in some of the real nuanced stuff, and, you know, unfortunately, he fell ill. He's also somebody that, their firm also does the audits for several local governments in the state as well, so there's kind of been a cascading effect that delayed. There's no issues that we have with our numbers at all. It's just making the paperwork all come together at the end, so no real impact on the county, and I think we were by far not, you know, there were quite a few governments that filed for extensions this year because of either COVID issues or other things that delayed, but it was kind of interesting to see how one person, there's a ripple effect across a good portion of this part of the state from the loss of one person. So I do, I mean, definitely agree, and Tony had brought us a pretty good plan to work towards bringing this all back in-house, so we aren't reliant on any potential single point of failure outside the company, or, excuse me, the county in the futures.
Question. I did want to say, to that point, Mr. Chairman, that I discussed, I had a discussion with the audit partner this morning, and you're exactly right, there's not an issue with the audit. He doesn't see any blowback onto the county or issues with the numbers. It's purely administrative issue in getting the documents through the pipeline.
Well, thank you, Tony. Thanks. Do we have any other staff that have comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to open public comment, and this is a time for citizens to bring up issues to us that aren't going to be addressed on the agenda later today. The items we do have to discuss later would be, we're reviewing our minutes from previous meetings, open records policy, and the 1041 regulations, so if you have comments related to those, we'll take them at that time, but, sir.
My name is Tom Lassiter, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I own land between the Palmer Divide and Highway 24 northeast of Matheson. The Palmer Divide is a rocky escarpment which runs from the Front Range eastward 80 miles to Lyman. It separates the Arkansas River Basin and the South Platte Basin. I have talked to every landowner between Highway 24 and Highway 86, and they are all opposed to all four of the proposed routes which Excel has suggested. The area between Highway 24 and Highway 86 from Elbert to Lyman is a pristine wildlife corridor, unblemished by high voltage transmission lines. Ten miles west of Lyman, there is an existing high voltage transmission line called the Pronghorn Missile Site Gentai. The four routes Excel Energy has proposed are all bad choices, and they bisect this pristine wildlife corridor. I went to the meeting in Lyman last Wednesday with many of the area landowners and spoke with the two project leads, Amber Deedus and Heather Bricky. The reasons they gave for not having considered the Pronghorn to Missile Site Gentai are absolutely false corporate talking points. This unblemished area between the Palmer Divide and Highway 24 is priceless to the citizens of the Front Range of Colorado and all of the people who call Elbert County home. Excel Energy has repeatedly proven that they are a good corporate citizen, and when provided with good feedback, they do what is right for the landscape and the people who live there. There is an obvious solution, which is to put this high voltage transmission line in an existing energy corridor. Let's get the message to Excel not to cut corners. So my challenge to you and all of the citizens of the Front Range in Colorado Springs and Denver, and all of the citizens who live in Elbert County, is come to Kiowa some afternoon this fall, have lunch at one of our local cafes, and then drive east towards Lyman along the Palmer Divide, and tell me where you would bisect this beautiful pristine scenery. And I guarantee you, you won't choose an additional place to bisect it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Yep, if we could name an address in three minutes.
Yes, I know the drill. Ursula Hummel, temporarily 11340 Copper Canyon Circle in Kiowa, and I echo Mr. Lassiter's comments. It's vital, even though we're leaving, we're moving to South Dakota, a freedom-loving state. We will be sad to leave, but I hope that y'all can just consider, and as you know me and my, all my messages, I wasn't even going to talk today, that you do look into the reduction in noise pollution, light pollution, and this absurdity that Excel wants to impose upon us. But I do want to thank you for your service. You guys have been phenomenal, you have listened to me, as ridiculous as I can be at times, and everyone else here who's been a service, a member to our community, and that includes Dallas Schroeder and the sheriff, and everyone that works as first responders. We will miss you, but we are looking forward to new adventures in a great state, and y'all are welcome to come visit. Thanks.
Thank you, Ursula.
Hello again. Jill Adair, 19724, Wiedemeyer Road, Kiowa. As members of the Elbert County Environmental Alliance, we would like to address the public document which was sent to the Board of County Commissioners from a law firm representing Excel Energy. They are requesting changes be made in Elbert County's 1041 rules and regulations, which they feel are necessary, for Excel Energy to effectively process an application to initiate a major infrastructure electrical transmission project in our county. We also would like to know the premises for the meeting that occurred last week between the Community and Development Service Director, the Elbert County Attorney, and Excel, and if that meeting is a matter of public record. We would like to call out a couple of points brought forth by the law firm to make sure we understand the potential impact of the proposed changes and how they will affect the responsibilities of our county commissioners to fulfill their roles as elected representatives of the citizens of Elbert County. Point one, the law firm from Excel proposes that the CDS Director's interpretation of the regulations or any other part of the county code as applied to the proposed application shall be binding. This puts the CDS Director's interpretations as a singular power without reviewing or approval of the county commissioners. This implies that neither the Planning Commission nor the B O C C would have the opportunity to review and approve decisions made by the CDS Director. Point two, currently invitations to participate in a pre-application meeting may be sent to other county departments, this Colorado Parks and Wildlife, or other significantly affected referral agencies at the CDS Director's discretion. Why does the law firm find it necessary to strike out the CPW or other affected agencies if the invitation to participate is at the CDS Director's discretion? Why does the law firm feel the need to limit agencies that the CDS Director may want to invite to the pre-application meeting? Point three, in Section M, the law firm would like to add the following language. The proposed project was prepared after consult with an input from Colorado Parks and Wildlife about the proposed project's potential impact on wildlife resources in the county. This language then supersedes the county's ability to reach out for additional comments from the CPW after the applicant has satisfied the current criteria for the application. Thank you, Carrie, we'll carry on.
We're trying to keep it to three minutes each. I'm Carrie Giblitz, 19656 Wiedemeyer Road, Kiowa. To continue, point four, the law firm would like to have added to Section M the general approval criteria that documentation that the applicant already has has the right to obtain or has the ability to obtain through condemnation, if necessary, all land rights required for the proposed project located within Elbert County. We would like to have some clarification on this point, because based upon testimony from the attorney for the PUC at the previous Board of County Commissioners meeting, we understand that any opposition from the county regarding the application would have to be submitted to the PUC by Excel Energy for adjudication. Also, this is calling out that Excel has the right of condemnation, and it is our understanding that this authority was under the auspices of the PUC and/or CETA. Isn't it inappropriate for the 1041 regulations to assume that an applicant for any project has the authority for condemnation? Point five, by stating that, quote, "where feasible, major facilities of a public utility within the county shall be located so as to avoid direct conflict with any adopted Elbert County master plan," the law firm is attempting to limit challenges to the application based solely on our master plan. What about other plans that the county might have that are not included in the master plan? Shouldn't these plans be considered as well? The purpose of the 1041 legislation is to empower local governments to have a voice at the table for major infrastructure projects. Our county commissioners represent our citizens, landowners, and communities, and together we understand this county better than anyone else outside of our county. It is our land, our homes, our wildlife, our history, and our way of life that will be impacted. This entire letter from Excel's law firm, some acts of the law firm trying to limit our input into the process of putting a major infrastructure project into our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay. Seeing none, all closed public comment. Did want to respond, the, you know, as you said, pretty substantial letter from Excel's attorneys, and there was a meeting between them and staff to try to, I think, attorney to attorney, what are you trying to actually propose? When we get to the 1041 portion and reopen that hearing later this morning, we'll be going through that letter generally point by point, and so, and then to the Hummels, I just want to take a moment to say thank you very much. You've been very informed, very active in the community since you've been here. Your work in the Kiowa Food Bank has been tremendous and helped countless, well, you've counted them, so I won't say countless citizens, but thank you very much. Thanks. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just a quick comment is that I read the Excel letter, and there's some things there that really don't fit us. And to give you an example is recommendations from CDS staff, and notice I use the word recommendations, not final decisions.
Grant, if I may, we probably should save those to when we reopen the hearing, just so all our.
But they don't have an application in yet.
Thank you. All righty, so, you know, generally, we have discussion items, and we had nothing teed up, but we're continuing some, obviously, discussion on 1041 in a bit, but, so moving on to our action items, I'd accept a motion to consider approval of the July 27, 2022 minutes for the B O C C.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the July 27, 2022 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes as presented for July 27 and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The second is a very short set of minutes from an August 3 Board of Equalization meeting.
I'll make a motion. We approve the August 3, 2022 CBOE minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second.
The motion and a second to adopt the minutes as presented from the August 3 CBOE meeting and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next item is just final consideration to the open records policy. We had that on discussion last week. We did receive some input. There's no other, there's no proposed changes, and we've received no other inputs since that time, but.
Yeah, Bart Greer, County Attorney. I haven't received any additional comments. I haven't made any additional changes based on existing comments.
Yeah.
You know, it's pretty standard minor changes that we try to do in reviewing our policies as close to annually as we possibly can. There's, in the last couple of years, been some minor changes to open records law and statute made by the legislature, and so that's going to necessitate certain changes regardless, and those have been made, but it really doesn't change our policy in any major way, in my opinion.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Any public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the open records policy as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the open records policy that has been presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll revisit this again in a year. So next item we have up is to reopen the public hearing and continue discussion on the updates to the 1041 regulations. I'd accept a motion to open public hearing on this item.
I'll make a motion. We open the public hearing on the 1041 regulation update.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reopen public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we've returned to public hearing. Just, we'll have some discussion for those that may not have been tracking the details. We have opened and held discussion on this in two previous B O C C meetings, and last Wednesday, we also had a workshop open to the public to discuss quite a few of the items. At the workshops, you don't come to decisions. It was more back and forth with staff, items that we had concerns with, and requests that they bring us recommendations on those items at this meeting. So with that, I would turn it over to either Bart or Greg, if you have input on those items.
Yeah, Bart Greer, County Attorney. One of the reasons we ask for public comment to be limited to things that aren't on the agendas.
Could you bring the mic closer?
Yeah, one of the reasons we have a request that public comment does not include items that are going to be on the agenda is because it's very likely that we're going to be discussing those exact issues, and there's going to be public comment on that exact topic because it's already on the agenda. And so I can address some of those points that were brought up in general. The CDS Director and myself did have a conversation about the entire letter that has been discussed that that law firm did send. We wanted to go through and make sure we understood what their points were. I don't think we agreed with very many of their points, and I think some of the concerns that were listed today are some of the same concerns that the county share. And so, you know, we did go through and we made some minor proposed changes. I think those are going to be available in, for review in the packet for our next meeting when 1041 regulations are considered again as far as the changes that we've made, but one of those is there was a request to have the setbacks be a half mile instead of 1,320 feet. That is inconsistent with pretty much any notice requirement or setback that we have in any of our other regulations at this point. For conformity and lack of confusion, I, we agreed that 1,320 feet is where it should stay. We did take, and so we're making that proposed recommendation as far as the updates. There are also some concerns that were addressed as far as, you know, we don't just want to talk about, you know, one turbine, if it's a wind turbine, or five turbines, but we want to talk about the total acreage that's impacted as well, and that makes sense. That was a public comment that I think was on point. I think that is something that, you know, it is possible that you're impacting a larger amount of acreage with only a few wind turbines or, you know, a solar farm that maybe is more spread out than your typical solar farm, that sort of thing. And so that was something that the county wanted to take into consideration and thought was some good feedback from the public. So that is incorporated as recommended changes to the board, and that is something that will be in the draft, proposed draft regulations that are going to be in the packet for the next Board of County Commissioners meetings. Other than that, you know, there's some fairly straightforward points that I think the law firm did make, which is, you know, we need some clearer definition as to what this term is, or we would like a reference back to your regulations as to, here's what this term means. You already have it in your regulations, you just need to say, yeah, this is the same thing we meant in Section 2 of the Elbert County zoning regulations in code. And so we've done that. We've been a little bit more specific, less general, and we did think that that was a point that was appropriate to take into account. But those are the sorts of considerations that staff, including myself, has listened to and tried to incorporate. We did take only a few of the law firm's considerations and really implement anything, but mostly that was associated with definitions or something that I think is helpful in specifying and being very clear about what the county is talking about and what's being regulated. And so, obviously, I think both public comment and some of the law firm's concerns as well, they were all considered. We went through the entirety of the regulations, and we put maybe six or seven changes into the total regulations that I think really help with the codification of these regulations and clarify things, so.
Yeah, to the point made earlier, and I know we discussed it during the workshop last week, I mean, we accepted none of their recommendations that shortcut the public process or preempted decision-making in public hearing by granting final authorities to the CDS Director. I mean, they were really asking for, you know, an initial phone call to be binding at the end of the process, which was not appropriate for certainly projects of this scope.
Yeah, our concern was they're almost asking for a predetermination at that point, and the concern that there's a usurping of authority that the Board of County Commissioners really should be making is something that staff shared, and so that is not something that we implemented.
Yeah, I agree with what you just said, is when I read the Excel recommendations, I found them kind of burdensome in that they took away a lot of the authority of the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. The staff, our staff, they're the ones that compile all the data, but then they put it, and then they make recommendations to the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission, of which there are nine of them, discuss it and vote on it, and then they either make a recommendation to us to approve it or not to approve it, but, and the final decision is made based on those recommendations and those conditions and those kinds of things. The other thing is, is that we want to be in a position where we can make what we consider, and I don't mean we as the county commissioners, I mean we as the public, we as the Planning Commission, we as our staff, to do the best that we can, and that doesn't mean it's perfect, but the best we can for Elbert County. Some of those considerations in there did take away that, what I, the way I read it anyway, of course, I'm an engineer trying to be a lawyer, is that... anyway, of course, I'm an engineer trying to be a lawyer, is that I found them difficult to figure out how to interpret.
I'll just say, we are taking this very serious and everything and looking at this, but, you know, when we're looking at the regulations, we've also got to be reasonable when we're putting things in this regulation because otherwise they're not really going to work one way or another. So we've got to look at things reasonably and leave the emotion out of it when we're looking at things and making decisions.
I would say additionally, I know there was no consideration of adopting any restriction on our ability to choose who we refer an application to to get expert advice, and maintaining also the ability to require specific expert studies funded by the applicant in, there was a broad array of whether it was historical, archaeological, wildlife, you know, name your category, if it's something that is reasonably affected, and we need that information in order to make a good decision for the county, that remains something that will be in this regulation and be supported, so. I know there, like I said, you talked a little bit about some of the recommendations that have been made to include both acreages affected as well as number of towers or number of panels or wattage of panels. There, again, I think we had a little discussion off the utility, or off the electrical utility side of water and sewer and how we define a major versus a minor water or sewage facility for a subdivision or linking multiple subdivisions. I think that came in a lot closer to what makes sense. And I do want to look through the language again. I mean, we've, our notification shouldn't change, our standard setbacks probably should not change, but when we are talking, I do think we need, and we need language that also leads towards citing in a way that reduces visual and noise impacts and lighting impacts. I mean, I don't think we can, I don't think you can ever pick a right number, but I think we've got to steer in the direction that, again, that can drive, show us, show us your data, show us the studies on sound propagation. Oil and gas guys do it for drilling sites. You should be able to do it for any noise-producing item, where oil drilling is a kind of a transient, a week or two at a time per hole in the ground. We know that a wind tower is going to be producing noise of some sort for its lifetime, so I think we do need to still look at that a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, the, this last draft that we've got hasn't been posted yet, and because of that, I think from a technical aspect, we should probably-
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Continue.
Okay, I think that we should probably continue this applica, this hearing on the 1041s until August 24th, when we have a chance to get through all of the last-minute edits.
Yeah, and before I ask for a second on that, I would also like to ask if we have public comment in the room today. We have received some email that we've considered as well that talks to setbacks specifically on wind towers and some other aspects that we're, we have under consideration, but if there's something to add today, we'll take that, and as Grant said, we need to have, I think, a final draft for consideration that is publicly available before we close public comment completely and make any final decision. Do we have any other public input from the room today on this? Ma'am? I already said goodbye.
Yeah, I did. Hello again, Ursula Hummel, 11340 Copper Canyon Circle. I should have also mentioned that my husband and I have lived out here for 15 years, and what brought us to beautiful Elbert County was the peaceful look, the visual appeal of, and y'all know where we live. We can see Pike's Peak, and I hope that you, when you are considering all of this as commissioners, you also look at the visual appeal, or lack of appeal, maybe for a better word, of what that structure would look like. We've already dealt with the LNG plant. Noise was horrendous. The visual impact, they didn't even consider, and thanks to Grant and the other county official that we dealt with, yeah, we were able to talk to him and Rob Plain of that department was able to build that structure only because we were offended at the noise and the light, and they worked with us. But that's still, I mean, as nice as it is, it's still an eyesore, and again, we're moving, so it won't impact us, but all of our neighbors, especially on Copper Canyon Circle, are very appalled at what could happen to that area with regards to the Excel power pathway. But I just hope you, you know, consider that. This used to be, and we see it changing, that's why we're moving. It used to be so pristine out here, and it's changing. And I know that progress is part of our world, but I'm just, I just am appalled as a soon-to-be-gone resident, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ursula. Mr. Lassiter?
Tom Lassiter again. So I will, I will have plenty of comments on this, these regulations. Who do I email them to?
It'd go to our CDS Director, Greg Thompson, and he can get you his card right after the meeting.
Great, and I just had one specific question about this total acreage impacted concept. Can you tell me how that is calculated? And I agree that the visual aspects, I hope that the visual aspects are part of the total acreage impacted concept.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, again, at risk of overstepping what's coming out in public, that should be described in the final, the draft language for adoption should describe what the acreage pieces are.
Thank you, and has it, has it been published at all in a draft?
After the discussions last week, we just got the proposed final from staff yesterday, so we'll get that published.
And is that, is that draft available online?
It is not at this moment. It should be no later than the Thursday, we'll try to get it up sooner, but it'll be no later than the Thursday before our next meeting, so-
Thank you.
You'll have six days with it. Yeah, so any other comment at this time? Okay, so again, we'll leave the public comment period open through our next meeting, either email or verbal comments at our next meeting. And I did just want to say, quite a few of the notes we're receiving, citizens seem, they're, I'll just say, disturbed by the fact that we're talking about wind and solar, and this is not a, an effort to encourage or discourage, but to have something in regulation that actually does allow the county and through citizen input some control over what happens to the county. If we don't have something in regulation, we have no hooks really to make demands or to have some control over the future of what happens. We're pretty much at the whim of what state, state regulations, state law, and the PUC would allow, so it's not that we're merrily going along with the build it and they will come philosophy that we've heard in the papers. It's, we need to have something to base our ability to make decisions and make rulings on, so. With that, we had a motion, accept a second for the continuance.
I'll second the motion to continue.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to continue consideration of 1041s until our next meeting, which was the August 24th at 9:00. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. All right. That was our substantial business for this morning. Just for board planning, obviously, we'll have the continuation of this hearing at our next meeting. We should have an update on the Public Works Facility, teed up for that as well. Do you have anything else you might be? Yeah, and then, Tony, I'd also kind of like just a quick review of where we at, are at in the budgeting process for '23. Okay, that gets us going for next week. We'll, we have several land use items this afternoon, but those will be at 1:00 PM at this location, but for now, we're in recess, so thank you very much.